Okay, I think we will start. It's just, it's almost 6:04 and I still have some people joining us, but as good school board members do, they jump right in and pick up where everything is taking off. So again, Superintendent Basler here, I have Patty Carmichael with me on the line in a different area in Bismarck Mandan. I also have Chief of Staff Donna Fishbeck with me, the Department of Public Instruction Chief of Staff Donna Fishbeck with us tonight. I'm not sure if Assistant Superintendent Lori Matsky has joined us as well, but with those three, that's essentially the executive leadership team at the Department of Public Construction. I as the superintendent, Donna Fishbeck as the Chief of Staff, and Lori Matsky as Assistant Superintendent. So we are all very grateful to you spending your evening, some part of your evening with us. I know during this pandemic time, there is a tremendous amount of responsibility pulling at all of you as adults in your own right, in your own professions, your own careers. Most of you, many of you are family members of some way, likely a student that is currently going to school. And then of course, the school board responsibility hat that you wear is tremendous during all times, not just in these times, but particularly in these times as we prepare for spring graduations and all of those other things that go along with budget planning into the new year. And now we have the pandemic COVID event. And so I just want to thank you again for joining us. I would, I want to say thank you to Alexis Vaxley, who is your Executive Director of your North Dakota School Boards Association. Without Alexis's partnership and cooperation and collaboration on this, none of this could happen. I will, for those of you that don't know and weren't with us last week, I will just share that the majority of you likely know that before I became the state superintendent, I was on the Mandan School Board for nine years and served as president of that board for seven years. The Chief of Staff, the Department of Public Instruction, Donna Fishbeck, was also on the Mandan School Board for nine years and was the vice president while I was president during that time. So our appreciation and understanding of the work that school board members do, and actually the critical role that school board members have in their school district's success and the leadership that you play is immeasurable. And so I am very grateful personally and professionally to Alexis Vaxley's leadership. As I said, she has been a tremendous partner as your executive director for a number of years, and the growing partnership between DPI and NDSBA is so very valuable to us. You are fortunate to have a leader like Alexis and her team at the NDSBA. They represent your interests well, and her presence at so many meetings from a whole host on the wide spectrum of things that involve K-12 education is admirable. So Alexis, I'm going to kick it over to you to welcome your members and make any comments that you'd like to make.
I don't think she has joined us yet, though.
She did text me.
You can star six to unmute your lines if you would wish.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Alexis.
All right, thank you. I would hit star six to unmute and it would tell me I was muted right back. So sorry about that, but thank you Kirsten for your very kind words. I sure appreciate it and I appreciate your leadership during this time as well. I've gotten to watch Kirsten advocate for school districts over and over and over again over the last four weeks, which is nothing new. It's just been more hours of the day lately. So we appreciate all of you taking more time out of your day today to join us. Hopefully you will find this helpful. As always, if you have questions, are looking for resources, please let us know and we're happy to help at NDSBA. Kirsten, I will let you take over.
Thank you so much again, Alexis. So for those of you that have joined us via team, there is a meeting chat that you can type your questions or if you would like, if you prefer, if you're joining us on a telephone versus a computer or a tablet, please feel free to star six your phone and we can, we can take your calls that way. And essentially, we have about 150 attendees on the line right now, which is, just makes me so proud and affirms what I know about North Dakota school board members is their commitment right over dinner hour to join and talk about how they can lead their school districts better. So I learned more from you all about how I can help and what barriers I need to remove in order for you to lead your districts well. So I will open it up to questions first. There are a few things that I'm prepared to talk about if we don't get to those in your questions, but I'll start with questions and then I can share some information and it will likely lead to more questions. No, get down, get down, get down. So anyone wanting to be the brave first one, either type a question or ask a question? So with that, I will probably lead with something that is quite important to school board members as they go into the budget creation season. You may have heard that the third phase, phase three of the federal government's COVID-19 national funding packages involved K-12 education. So phase one was the Coronavirus Preparedness and Response Supplemental Appropriations Act. Phase two has become known as the Families First Act, and phase three is the one that deals primarily with K-12 funding. That is named the CARES Act. So the CARES Act is the act that was signed into law by President Trump on March 27th, and it provided $13 billion in funding for education, K-12 education. Of that $13 billion, $33.3 million will be received by North Dakota, by our Department of Public Instruction, to be delivered out to our local education agencies, better known as school districts in North Dakota. So DPI anticipates that, I just actually got off the phone this afternoon with Assistant Secretary Mick Zase, Secretary DeVos's Assistant Secretary. Mick informed me that we can receive our application and certification form to receive these funds next week, Thursday. And so we have done some initial calculations about what each school district would receive. And if you are interested in knowing exactly what your school district would receive, on DPI's website, under our COVID-19 update, there is a CARES Act relief fund allocation website where you can look up your school district's name and find out approximately how much you'll be receiving through this CARES Act relief funding. So essentially, it is, will be similar to the amount of dollars that you received for your Title I funding during the last school year. It's delivered out on the Title I formula, funding formula, but it's important to note that it's only based on that funding formula. It is not necessarily needing to be used for Title I dollars. This is, it's important to underscore that this is not a stimulus package. It is intended to be a relief funding package, and it is intended to cover unanticipated costs or extraneous costs that were caused by the coronavirus. So such things such as the transportation dollars that you may need to be expending for delivery of food and nutrition and/or instructional materials if you're experiencing an extra burden on that, if you're experiencing extra cleaning or deep cleaning costs, if you're experiencing extra hours that your paraprofessionals are needing to provide beyond their regular 40 hours, all of those things can be utilized, the CARES Act can be leveraged. One of the things that you've probably noticed and identified that has been caused by this coronavirus are a couple of things. Number one, you've probably noticed that the students and the teachers aren't as prepared as you may have wanted them to be, to be thrust into a distance education or a distance learning program. So the federal secretary, Secretary DeVos, the governor, and I all would like for you to consider among such issues as transportation and operational dollars, but what type of learning loss are your students possibly experiencing? Is there going to be some learning, extra learning needs that will go beyond what the normal summer slide remediation wouldn't be covering? Will your students need some extra programming or extra assistance to make sure that they don't slide behind their grade level expectation for student outcomes in math or reading or English language arts? So there are some opportunities for you, for your districts to use these CARES dollars in order to provide some content curriculum delivery. You may also have noticed that maybe some of your teachers and/or your principals and superintendents themselves aren't as familiar with the delivery of education in distance learning, and perhaps your school district may want to invest in some professional development opportunities for your teachers and your leaders to receive some continuing education classes on proper pedagogy or best practices of online or distance learning, so they might be prepared for any future event. Some of you may also be experiencing the need to provide some of your teachers and/or students with hotspots for broadband accessibility and/or devices. All of those items are available as approved use of these CARES Act dollars. It's our commitment to you that we will make the delivery of these dollars as simple and bureaucratic free as possible. We hope to provide a three-day turnaround in the application and certification process for these dollars. So that is our update on the CARES Act funding. So stay tuned and learn more about that even more next week. Any questions on the CARES Act?
I don't have any questions on the CARES Act, but on the transportation subsidy, I was told that the governor does not have the power to pay for 100% of the subsidy for transportation to release it. Is that true?
That is true. Thank you so much. That was my, going to be my next item of sharing with you if somebody didn't ask about it. Last week I had shared with you that I understood how important it was to our school districts to ensure that they had those transportation dollars, especially those smaller school districts with very tight budgets in general and in particular tight transportation budgets. So I knew that that was extremely important to all of you and I worked diligently. It was one of the first questions that I was asked and one of the issues that I've worked probably hardest at. And so through this whole course of action, we have earnestly explored a way to make available a prorated transportation report. And what that means is, we all agreed that the simple solution to this would be to prorate the last nine weeks of school. So essentially, from March 13th on is about 25, is about one nine-week period of a school year. We wanted to just take that nine weeks, that 25% of your calendar year and prorate that for the rest of the school year, so you would be able to submit that on your report. So as we went over last week, the transportation dollars, all of your transportation money was delivered to you with your final payment that came from our office on April 1st. So all of the dollars for transportation for the 1920 school year, you have in hand, you have that. The challenge came was, is that the transportation dollars are a year behind. Your transportation dollars for the 2021 school year are based on the miles driven and the rides, meaning that you had riders on there, miles driven and rides per rider that you had incurred during the 1920 school year. That's what your 2021 school or transportation budget would be based on. When suddenly 25% of the year is eliminated with, of riders, you begin to have a shortfall in your 2021 budget. So we were earnestly exploring options to make available that prorated transportation report. Unfortunately, what we discovered was that the governor does not have the executive order authority to rewrite legislative language or language in state agency budget bills. And that's where the transportation formula is, it's in my budget bill. The governor can only suspend existing North Dakota century code as it exists. He can only suspend the language that exists. He cannot rewrite or change any of the language to make it a different formula. So we had called in a number of people. I worked with the Attorney General, I worked with our legislative management team, I worked with our appropriation chairs, as well as our leadership in the legislature. And further exploration determined that the authority does not exist with our interim legislative budget section either. So it's important to know that there will be an opportunity during the 2021 legislative session to pursue emergency language that could distribute that portion of the transportation funding that is unable to be sent to school districts due to COVID-19. But that's where the CARES Act relief funding comes in. Those districts that are receiving the CARES Act relief funding can also use those dollars to replace the lost revenue from the decreased transportation reimbursement. So when completing the 2019-20 transportation report, districts should plan to report miles and rides for transportation routes through March 13, 2020. And if and when we open up, the governor reopens the school buildings and buses start to go out and pick up riders, of course, that portion would be allowable as well. So I hope that answered the question about transportation. Any other questions? One of the things that I think is important to note for school board members as you consider employment is some guidance that we have received from the Department of Ed. So the CARES Act funding is a federal education funding, and therefore the fiscal regulations of EDGAR and OMB guidance still apply, and LEAs will need to consult with various stakeholders at the local level. So all of those normal regulations and expectations still apply. However, there is an additional requirement as a condition of receiving these funds that is known to the state. There may be more, but at this point, we've uncovered this. Congress was very clear when they passed this CARES Act funding that a local education agency, again, local education agency is better known as a school district in North Dakota. So a local education agency, the state, or an institute of higher education, or any other entity that receives funds under this education stabilization fund shall, to the greatest extent practical, continue to pay its employees and its contractors during the period of any disruptions or closures related to the coronavirus. So Congress, our senators and our congressmen and women out in DC have added an additional element to the receipt of the CARES Act. So it says, "To the greatest extent possible, practical, greatest extent practical, school districts should continue to pay their employees and contractors during the period of the disruption of closures related to the coronavirus." So that was new, and that was what we're uncovering in the CARES Act. If there's anything more and new as we move through this, I'll be sure to let you know. But that has caused some additional questions about, what if we have a school, transportation, we contract with a contractor and they have laid off bus drivers? And I think that's where the term, "to the greatest extent practical." So I believe it's the intent of the law that you would continue to honor that contract with your school bus contractor, but then if they in turn hire or lay off bus drivers or their employees, not certain that you can really do anything about that at this point in time. We would hope that if you kept them whole, that they would keep their employees whole. I think North Dakota is in a better position than many states that I visited with because it was our intent when the schools closed and we decided to continue, our full continuum of learning, that the state can fulfill their obligation of the state's funding and so that the foundation aid continued to be delivered out to our school districts. I know that, in visiting with my colleagues, that many states did not have that continued receipt of state dollars. When governors closed schools, the funding from the state was discontinued at that point in time. So fortunately for us, I think we're a bit ahead of this coronavirus act and the expectation from Congress because our state did continue to pay the foundation aid dollars in order to honor those school and contracts and the employee compensation that is out there. So other, any more questions, either in the meeting chat or via voice?
Yes, I have a question about the contract bus driver. Are we supposed to keep them whole 100%? Or, because they don't have to buy gas, so do we deduct what they normally spend on gas?
So, that is a very good question. And so what we are, you know, there's lots of different examples and there's lots of different scenarios that are occurring out there. And when I'm asked that question of district leaders and sometimes bus driver contracts, what I encourage everyone to do is recognizing the fact that we have 175 districts in the state. Each of those districts have unique community needs and unique relationships with their contractors and their bus drivers. Only you understand the challenge that you have in securing bus drivers and contracted bus driver contracts. And so I know of many situations where there has been negotiations that have occurred, and that's why I appreciate the language. I'm not a lawyer, and I didn't even stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night, but I do appreciate this clause or this line in there that it says, "Shall to the greatest extent practical, continue to pay its employees and contractors." And so I would encourage all of you as leaders within your communities to make those determinations and make sure that you know that you'll have our support as you negotiate those specific needs and unique local circumstances. Other questions? Now, I know school board members are not this quiet. I can give you some updates on the academic side of things and child nutrition side of things as well, just for your information. So child nutrition, we have, all of our schools have become summer food program school distribution sites. And that means that the summer food distribution was allowed to start early. All of those sites that have been able to provide summer food nutrition programs can continue through the summer, and they will be provided that designation. We're working with some communities that we understand that it goes beyond just the food insecurity, just goes beyond just the students that are 0 to 18 in the summer. And so we're working with some of our communities to provide them a status called community eligibility benefits that would also provide some food services to, and food products and meals essentially to our, all community members, not just students 0 to 18. So we're working with that. I was on the phone today with many of your food service directors, 150 food service directors were on the call today. Many cooks couldn't join them because it was at 10:00 AM and they were busy in the kitchens and/or in your gymnasiums putting together the thousands of meals that still go out that we maybe, I hope haven't forgotten about, but that work is still going on. And so we had a call with them today as we were just moving through some reporting expectations and some, answering some questions about those food service programs. I also want to share with you that many of your school districts have had teachers take advantage of becoming AP teachers, Advanced Placement teachers in math, English, or science, or computer science. And that AP Summer Institute training will again continue this summer, but AP Advanced Placement through College Board has decided to provide an option for the training to occur online. So if any of you have teachers out there in math, English, science, or computer science that maybe were teaching dual credit before, but because of the new Higher Learning Commission standards, you can no longer offer a dual credit class, that teacher can be AP certified and we can offer the, those students, we can offer the AP classes at no cost to your school and no cost to your students or their families for the AP exam because of the funding that comes from the state. So there is reimbursement from DPI for any teacher for travel and registration for this training, for any one of your teachers that wants to become certified in AP English, math, science, or computer science. So if you have questions about that, let us know. We just wanted to update everybody that they wouldn't even need to leave their homes this year and they could be AP certified during and paid for by the state. Special education continues to be one of the issues that we're working diligently with. Parents are very, very appreciative of the, of the support and the communication that they're receiving for your school, from your school district, so thank you for that. I also have to say that I was out looking for yeast this weekend to make, to bake Easter bread for my dad, which has been, become my tradition for him, and I had to go to like five or six different grocery stores searching for yeast, and I never found it, by the way. But I was wearing my mask as the governor recommends, and people still recognized me and sought me out to thank me for the great work that our schools are doing in this time. So I needed to share that to you too because it is more you than any of us here, and you deserve that gratitude. What you have done to keep the train running on schedule and on the tracks during all of this is heroic. So I just wanted to let you know that the role that public education is playing in the lives of our students and our communities is becoming more and more known throughout the state and more and more appreciated. So with that, I just, I wanted to say thank you for that. One of the other issues that I wanted to chat with you about is when this relief funding package comes through, the CARES Act relief funding package comes through, it will be a significant amount of dollars for some of you, especially some of you that have a very small budget. You are always concerned about that end of year balance, that year-end balance, that if you go above 35%, it causes you to have some deducts. Well, Adam Tesher and I are working with the governor's office and the governor's counsel, legal counsel, to provide an executive order to suspend that year-end balance requirement for this year so you can without worry accept those CARES Act relief dollars. So that is another thing that is important for you all as you continue or start to build your budgets.
I got a quick question. It's a little bit off topic. Has there been word on how long the closure is going to be? Has it been extended yet?
So that is, that is the most frequently asked question for the last six days. And I know that there's another question after that, so I'll get to that as soon as I finish that, and that's completely on topic. This is completely wide open, whatever you want to talk about, whatever questions you have, this is the time to ask it. So I appreciate that. So there is no, there is no update, there has been no update that has come from either my office or the governor's office. And so it's a good opportunity for me to just, to be clear that the only person that had the authority to close schools on a statewide basis is the governor, and the only person in the state that has the authority to open schools on a statewide basis is the governor. And so the governor and I do talk frequently, and here's what I know, he did answer this question publicly at a press conference a couple weeks ago. He's using essentially two metrics at this point in time before he will even begin considering whether or not to reopen schools. First and foremost, he cited the president's statement and declaration that social distancing should continue throughout the nation through April 30th. So he extended that through April 30th. And so Governor Burgum is certainly looking to our president's direction on that and extending social distancing through April 30th. The second indicator and metric that he mentioned at the press conference was, before he would entertain the idea of opening our schools again, he would have to be certain that we had reached our peak and our surge threat, and which means the metric that he would use is And which means the metric that he would use is the number of confirmed cases would could not be increased or stable. We need to we need to see a decrease in confirmed daily cases over a substantial amount of time. The governor did not define or wasn't explicit in what substantial meant to him. And I have yet to hear, but I've heard from him. I've heard from other sources, including CDC and WHO, that substantial time for decreases would be 14 days. So, considering today is April 15th, we're still two weeks away, two weeks and a day away from April 30th, and we are still not at a decline of confirmed cases or zero new cases in a day. So, we haven't even begun to begin that de-escalation. So, those are the metrics that our governor is using, and those are the metrics that I am providing as people ask me that question. I will also point out and take make note that in the governor's executive order, he did declare that the distance learning plans would count for instructional time for foundation aid payment through the end of the school year. So, through the end of the school year does mean June 30th, technically. If your calendar, if your school calendar said that your last day of school was going to be May 27th, then it would be May 27th. It would be May 22nd, May 22nd. Some school districts were their last day of school was June 4th. That's what it would mean for them. But as we look at the Declaration of Distance Learning being allowed to go through the school year, that has also put many of our school districts in the position of now planning for their summer school or their extended school year for their special needs students using their distance learning plan as well. We won't be asking any school district to submit a special plan for a distance learning for summer school or extended school year. We would just ask school districts to utilize their distance learning plan to count for the hours that are required for summer school reimbursement. So, that's the best that I can give you at this point in time. I wish I had more certainty. I do, I have, as I said, I communicate with the governor and the governor's office frequently. And I, you know, have shared with them that many school districts, even if schools were opened up, many school districts have found distance learning to be the continuity, the certainty, and the groove that their their students and families and teachers need, and they would like to continue out through the school year. I have shared that with the governor. I've also received some input from school districts that if the governor were to lift the school closures, that they'd like some transition time to allow five to seven days for their families and teachers to get re-transitioned back into a classroom setting. So, long answer, but I hope somewhere in there you I found something that that was helpful, that you found something that was helpful to you. There was another question, I believe. Yes.
I, sorry. Along that line that you were talking about, the extended school year. When we do ours in our district, the extended school year usually happens June, July-ish. Is that still recommended, that we continue to do distance learning through our special education as well as our regular education? And then also, this is about the time where we start, or in the spring, is when we do our driver's ed kind of program things. So, how do you recommend? Is that just basically up to us, how we would handle that? Or is that since it's still kind of covered under the school? What's the recommendations for that?
Such good question. Thank you so much. So, we'll deal with the distance learning first and into school year and extended school year. So, yes, at this point in time, we're recommending that schools plan to use their distance learning plan at this point to prepare for their summer, for their summer school and their extended school year. And if at any point in time, the the governor lifts the restricted school access and school districts determine, you as school board leaders and with your administrators, determine that that extended school year for our special needs students would be much better provided face-to-face. We absolutely 100% understand that every school district is making the best decisions they have that the moment that they need to make them with the information that they have at the time. So, if you submit your summer school plan for approval to meet the deadline, and it's a distance education plan, but suddenly schools are opened up and you want to adjust and modify to go to a face-to-face again, the department will work with you. We will make sure that that plan is amended, and you can re-engage in that face-to-face. And so, I would say, plan for the summer school and the extended school year based on your distance learning plan. And when and if we're allowed to open up the schools again through the governor's order, we will work with you to adjust that plan and based on what what your capacity is at your local school and what your your needs are at your local school. If you want to switch back into face-to-face and building use, you can do that. I also want to mention for extended school year for transportation, if if that transportation, if you are transporting special education students either to and from school or school to school, that is allowable, you can include that in your 2019-20 report. So, if we open back up and your extended school year is transporting special education students, you can include that in your transportation report as well. And so, regarding the driver's ed, so driver's ed, completely okay for you to offer the classroom instruction of driver's ed virtually and online. But the behind the wheel, if the restrictions remain, there still is no way that we found to provide behind the wheel instruction during this this COVID restricted closure, the restricted closure access. So, certainly move forward with driver's ed, classroom instruction, but behind the wheel is going to have to wait.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions? ACT tests have, we just received some information tonight that ACT tests, if your students, those 11th graders that weren't able to take the March 3rd administration exam date, they have the opportunity to take it June or July with a voucher that they'll be receiving from their high school principal. Those will, those will be allowed at any site at the most convenient to the students. And we just learned today that there will be no, there will be no change fee. So, if a student decides that they want to take it in June, and yet something happened in their community, and they want to take it over here in July, there'll be no cancellation fee. We are working with the governor's office, I may have mentioned this next last week as well, for the scholarship applications, the 2000, excuse me, the CTE and the academic scholarship application. We're working to suspend some of those expectations for this year's seniors to ensure that those students that are graduating this year that have worked so hard to earn that scholarship, we don't want them to miss out on it because of an ACT or workies exam. So, we're working to suspend those. And that should be, the next package of K-12 executive orders that you'll likely see come from the department will address the year-end balance, the teacher renewal and principal renewal credential, and the ACT and CTE scholarship. Any other questions? You really are all anonymous, so no one knows. So, you can add, this is your great, you can you can even ask me how old I am, and you would be anonymous. And that's a joke. Well, seeing or hearing no more questions. Alexis, would you like to say anything more? I know that sometimes it's a challenge for you to get unmuted, but if you would like to say anything more, I could leave the last word with you.
I think I managed to get unmuted on the first try this time. How did I do?
You did excellent.
Perfect. Thanks, Kirsten. I just want to say thank you to you and to your staff. I know your staff are working many, many, many extra hours to keep up with all of the questions that we have coming in. And and we really appreciate that, and we appreciate you taking the time to spend time with school board members tonight. Otherwise, I just just want to thank the board members who are on. And and one maybe reminder that I should put out there. We recently had a webinar for your school business managers on school board elections. We're going to see quite a few changes to those in in this cycle. So, if you have any questions, we had a great turnout for that webinar. I think we had 115 business managers participating, which was really fantastic. They are working hard to make sure your elections go go as well as they can. But if any questions arise, please don't hesitate to reach out. We've just in this past week added quite a few new resources on elections to our resource page. So, just want to make sure that everybody is aware. But otherwise, again, thank you, Kirsten, to you, to your staff, school board members. Thank you for your service. I know that you've been putting in extra hours as well, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks, Alexis. And to all of you on the phone, if you have suggestions on how this might be a better forum for you, how it might be better serve you, please share those with Alexis. Or if you prefer to be anonymous, we have a we have an email address at the Department of Public Instruction where people can email suggestions or questions into us. That is just information@nd.gov, I believe. Patty, can you type or can you announce it for those that are on the phone? I think I got that web or that email address correct. So, again, NDDPI@nd.gov. And so, that's just a general information box where people can pose questions and or provide suggestions. So, if you have any ideas or thoughts on how I might be able to make this more more effective for you or more helpful for you, please just utilize that and or give me or Alexis a call. Thank you so much. Stay safe.
I have a one, I have one question. Can you hear me?
Yes, I sure can.
Okay. Alexis made me think of a question regarding elections. Is there a kind of a statewide policy going forward to having absentee-only ballots for the upcoming June elections?
So, my understanding, and again, this is Secretary Jager's arena more than mine, but from what I understand, I believe all of our counties are doing, will not be having polling sites. They will be doing absentee ballots only. Some of our county courthouses will be acting as a place where you can submit your absentee ballot or you can vote there. But they will, there will, my understanding is that every county will be using absentee ballots that and some county courthouses will be a place where you can can submit your ballot. So, Alexis, if that's you heard differently, you might want to pop in here.
No, Kirsten, I I think that echoes what I have heard. School districts that are not hosting their election in conjunction with a county do have the ability to do the same. But that that is that is in line with what I have heard, what in line with what I have heard as well.
And my understanding is that the Secretary of State's office will be mailing an absentee ballot application for every voter that has has voted in the past recent elections.
That that is correct. And they they have very graciously added on to that application something that is is not usual but have added on a box for voters to check that they would like to receive a ballot for their school district election. And then county auditors will be working to get the applications that check school to your business managers, to your district, so that you can ensure those folks get a school ballot as well.
Very nice. Very nice. Thank you for that extra question. Any others? Very good. We will have another call next week, Wednesday at 6:00 PM. So, again, if you have suggestions, ideas, or questions in advance, please send them to Alexis me or NDDPI@nd.gov. Thank you so much, and have a safe evening.